And that brings us to item C, to consider adoption of Resolution 2015-28, establishing the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2015-16.
Yes, this is required every year for us to adopt a new appropriation limit. The appropriation limit is the maximum amount of taxes that the city can take in in any given year. Our number for fiscal year 15-16 is $18,99,903. The city is anticipating receiving $11,665,800. So therefore, we're anticipating receiving $6,434,103 and less in taxes than we're allowed under the law for the appropriation limit. If for some reason we get really lucky next year and we take in an extra $6.4 million, not only will I be smiling, but so will taxpayers because we'll have to find a way to give back what's above the $6.4 million addition. The calculation is based on the California per capita income. Last year, the CP CPI increased by 3.82 percent according to the Department of Finance. And it's also the higher of either the increase in the percentage of population in the county of San Mateo, which was 1 percent, or the growth in the city of Brisbane population, which was 2.41 percent. And if you remember, we've had some of the housing come online up in the Northeast Ridge, which is probably why that's higher than we normally see. So we take those, add them together, multiply those together, multiply that by the last year's limit to get to this year's new limit. And that's how we calculated it, and there's a calculation page attached as well.
Are there any questions for staff?
No.
Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-28, establishing the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to item D, to consider approval of request for proposals regarding creation of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
Yes, ma'am, good evening once again. This is the second time the council's heard this year, so I'll move through it a little quickly. First item, I do want to note that in the section under fiscal impact, when I wrote the staff report, I provided the language and the guidance the council had provided me the last time we talked about it. You've obviously made a different decision as you did your budgeting process this year, so that's obviously going to be corrected. The two things we're asking the council to do this evening is to comment on the scope that we've put into the request proposals. Are we asking the consultant to do the right thing? And the second thing we're looking for comment from on the council is, have we got the mix of the stakeholder group, the advisor group, correct? And with that, I'd be happy to take questions and comments.
Would you like to? Are you just saying yes?
Oh, I've got something to say.
Oh, okay.
Like everybody else here, always got something to say.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the one thing that, in my view, in terms of the evolving conversation we're having, would be useful to add a little bit more about trails. The way it's constructed now, it pretty much focuses on bike ways and pedestrian ways, which is great. But I think we need to add a little bit more language about trails because that's, you know, one of the things that justifies where we're taking the money from. And that's one of the reasons that the Park and Rec Commission, of course, wants to get involved in this because they want to do more on trails. And we have some major ones that clearly need to be incorporated, the Crocker Park Trail and the Cory Road and quotes. And then, you know, ways in which we can make sure we have, you know, as is kind of indicated here, the ways that you get, you know, connect up with the trails into the mountain and elsewhere. And so I just think there needs to be, in terms of the instructions to the future consultants, that it's clear that we're talking about a trail map as well. Now, we're not talking about trails on the mountain. We're talking about, you know, within Brisbane, but where they connect. And maybe that would include, you know, the Bay Trail and potential trails between, you know, the Bay Trail and across and up to the mountain and through the town. And so there's a lot of possibilities.
Got it, yes, sir. Okay, I understand.
And I don't think the language really stipulates that sufficiently. That's kind of my understanding of our conversation.
So Randy, you and I had a conversation in the conference room, talking exactly about what you said.
Right, yes, sir.
Did you incorporate some of those things?
I did. I incorporated all of those comments in there, sir.
Okay, so then those things...
I didn't see it in the language. Maybe I'm missing it.
I saw reference to trails under pedestrian plan.
There's a small reference, but not much.
And that's, I think, that's, I think, the distinction Councilmember Miller's drawn out is, I mean, I did put the comments in that Councilmember Lance had talked me about, but I think you're asking us to highlight it more.
Right.
And I think we can do that, whether I do it here in the proposal or whether I do it in the instructions to whoever the successful little bitters, but I'll take a note and make sure that that's handled.
Okay.
Because I understand what you're saying. At first, I thought that we were thinking about developing a trail map, and that's not, it's certainly not a mountain trail map.
No, 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 no.
It's our internal trail system.
Right, right.
And a consultant's probably going to ask me how I distinguish that from
Right.
this pedestrian map, and I'll explain to them which things, we counted that. And I think you gave three great examples, right? The Crocker Recreational Trail, the old Cory Road, and the Bay Trail. Those, so, but that's easy enough to incorporate.
Great. So that was my first reaction. The second, I guess, is just something we've talked about before, and it is in here in terms of reconstituting, you know, the Tunnel Avenue bicycle path or whatever we want to call it. But my question is, does it make any sense to talk about directing bicyclists down the safest way? And the reason I say that, and I'm glad the police chief is here, I mean, a very high percentage of the commute bicyclists come down and go back Tunnel Road.
Yeah.
Which is a very dangerous road for bicyclists. I mean, there's no place to go. If you're in conflict with a car and there's two cars and they don't want to let the bicy... I mean, it's very dangerous. And I'm amazed there haven't been more accidents than there have been. And so, and part of the problem, as we've said before, is that, you know, it's a San Mateo County map, kind of has it on there as a, you know, secondary bike route. And coming down from San Francisco, because they're directing them to the Bay Shore, you know, Caltrain Station, I mean, that's where they tell the bicyclists to go. I mean, you've got all these signs on the pavement and everything. And we don't have any signs or anything warning or any other thing we're doing. And I don't know what the solution is, but I'm thinking of, what can we do, you know, until we get something constructed, which may be a while? You know, how do we deal with that use of Tunnel Road and the dangers that are, to the bicycles especially, that are involved there? So that's just a question.
Yeah.
I don't know how to answer it, but it's a problem.
It's a tough, it's a tough question, and I think it's, I think it's really unfortunate that when San Francisco made the major improvements they did when they put the light street rail in, that they didn't do a more robust bicycling system there. Because I honestly think that's a big piece of what happens there. If your bicyclist is coming from that northern edge up there, say, up by the Russia House, if you're anywhere near there
Right.
and you look at what streets you're going to preferentially go on
Right.
as somebody who used to do eight to 10,000 miles a year on a bike, I'm telling you, Tunnel looks like a better road
Right.
compared to Bay Shore.
Right.
I mean, it feels narrow, but the traffic volume is down pretty low. So it's a little bumpy, but as opposed to getting out on Bay Shore, it's actually safer from a bicyclist's perspective. But I understand your point. I mean, it's part of what we want to do is, and part of why we ask the consultant as they're doing their studies or the potential consultants, is to analyze the connectivity with other, with other routes and make sure that there's some coordination there with that.
You're talking about the San Francisco portion of Bay Shore, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Where they have the shared lanes.
Right.
And I don't get that.
Yeah, and it's, and they're very tight, and I'm sure it was just a function of real estate. You know, you make allowances or certain things you have to do, and it's just...
Yeah, you take Tunnel and then it turns into a shared lane up there in the San Francisco portion, and it's like goofy.
Right.
Somebody's going to really get smacked at some point.
I agree. Yeah. Then I had just one other point. And I'm just wondering, in terms of the composition of the committee
Mm-hmm.
whether it might make sense, because this is mostly within the realm of the Complete Street Safety Committee, mostly
Mm-hmm.
that maybe it might make sense to have two representatives from that committee rather than just one.
I don't have any objections to it, sir. That's fine.
That's just a suggestion in terms of which groups are going to be, you know, mostly concerned about the whole picture.
Well, I'll tell you, certainly our staff's experience with them has been that they, the Complete Street Safety Committee we have right now has been one of our really, really hardworking groups, certainly that the public works folks have had to deal with. They've shown an incredible level of energy and interest in doing that, so I think having two people, two of them on...
They really want to do it, and you've got both public works and police there.
Right.
So, you know, it seems to me it's...
If that's the council's pleasure, I'm fine with it.
Okay, that's just a suggestion. That's it.
Cliff?
And I'm just sorry, ma'am, but could I ask, am I taking that on for guidance? That pleases the rest of the council if I were to change?
It pleases me.
Okay. I don't think it's anything you have to get a vote on. I'm just sort of getting a wet read on the x-ray, if that's okay for people. All right.
What number, would that be odd or even than the total number?
It makes it odd when you add one more.
Oh, that's better.
It's six now, this makes it seven.
Yes, ma'am.
That's odd.
Indeed, it is.
Yeah, you know, I think, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this. I like adding trail in there. Yeah, Randy and I met going over some of that language, you know, trying to connect some of our streets and walkways to existing trails that are on San Bruno Mountain, not identifying the trails on the mountain, but providing access to the trailheads. You know, one of the things that I did last week is that I met with, I'm forgetting her name, but she's the department head for the county park system and working on the trailhead for the requirement that the Toll Brothers has to do
Mm.
for part of their project. And so establishing a trailhead just up the road from where Randy lives, really a great spot. It's, you know, it's got parking, and there's no traffic issues there, and the area is already disturbed. And so it has, you know, potential access to a trail that already exists.
Right.
So, you know, it's just kind of, it's just nice to be able to have that type of knowledge in a document so that people that live on the ridge, you know, can say, okay, yeah, you know what, in our plan here's accessibility. And, you know, and we talked about trying to capture some Measure A dollars. And that's where you can capture, that's where you can capture those types of dollars when you have the plan and you're connecting your city with county park land. And so, you know, I really see this being an investment that then can provide greater financial opportunities that we can implement in, you know, in our walkability and cycle ability in our town. Good job, Randy.
Thank you, sir.
Laurie?
Sure. So I'm also glad to see this moving forward. I also had in my notes written that, you know, what about access to existing trailheads? And then I went back and saw it is in there, but it looks like a bunch of us feel like it's not highlighted enough. So I think that's a good idea. On page G2, under Bike Plan, the last bullet point, I would add South Hill Drive. It's talking, it mentions Valley Drive, Mission Blue, Guadalupe Canyon Parkway, but it's missing South Hill. So if bikes want to take that, you know, that road and make it a loop, I think it's good to include that. Another area that I see a need for improving the bikes, the bike lanes, in addition to Tunnel Road, would be Lagoon Way. I also, I've biked on that personally and felt like it's, it seems like a very narrow strip. Trucks and cars are driving by at pretty high rates of speed, and it doesn't feel like a safe place to bike. So I think it would be good to include, at least looking at the safety issues on Lagoon Way.
May I just respond to that? I think it's a good idea, but I just wanted to point out that I think we actually got some grant funds for putting supposedly bike lanes alongside there when John Quilter was our representative on the countywide committee.
Okay.
And so I think actually, presumably, you know, there are, you know, bike lanes alongside the road, but I guess the question is, you know, are they, and this was some, how long, I don't know, how many years ago? But maybe we need to look at, you know, improving those or making them safer or whatever.
Right.
But I think the idea is that, you know, there are lanes there and
All right, there are.
constructed.
And they get a lot of use, and it seems...
Yeah. Well, I mean, now that we've done the, you know, since the bridge has been brought down, you know, it's easier for people from central Brisbane to bike across the bridge and then turn right and go, you know, along Lagoon Way to Sierra Point.
That's why I agree.
So we need to improve that connectivity so that people can bike from town to Sierra Point.
And all those, I guess what I'm saying is that all those places, you know, have been sort of in our past planning, and we did try to do some things, but as you say, Cliff, they need, you know, they need to be upgraded. And that's the point of this, of course.
Well, and I guess, I think maybe we ought not to put that in there, though, and maybe we ought to just look at it now because there is an existing Class II bike way along Lagoon Way and along Sierra Point Parkway and along all of Bay Shore. And if there's, if that's a concern that we want to look at, why don't we just look at it and see what we need to do as opposed to, the consultant here is not really going to be looking at
No, it's going to be our body.
safety issues of existing projects as much as what we're trying to get him to focus on
Right.
is identifying start and end points and
Okay.
what are the connecting routes there.
I see.
And focus on that. But, I mean, we can talk offline, ma'am, about, you know
Sure.
what concerns are and what else we could do there. I think actually, the one that concerns me more is a little bit Sierra Point Parkway because I think that's one of the ones that, as we do the speed surveys, the speeds start to pick up more. And even though it's a long straight stretch of road, I think that's the one, you know, the speed limits, it was 35 10 years ago, and now it's 45, and
Yeah.
you're starting to, the problem is always the different operating envelopes, right? You've got a bicyclist going along, a casual bicyclist maybe going along at 10 miles an hour.
Right.
And then you've got a car coming along at 45 or 50, and that's, that seems to be when bad things happen, when the speeds are just so different.
Right. And, you know, even trucks
Right, right.
which are, you know, more dangerous for bicyclists in a way because what I understand, and maybe you can answer this, but I've known of a couple instances in which the trucks, when they go by, they create kind of a
Absolutely.
back pressure and it actually pulls in the bicyclist.
Right, right, yeah, they can suck you into them, right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's where you need the distance between the bicyclists and the vehicles.
Right.
All right. And then the last thing was that under pedestrian plan, I had emailed city staff about, you know, possibly including the Crocker Park Trail. And the response I got back was that it might be better not to actually put that in there because, or I had included, you know, possibly repaving it, and because there's some regulations about repaving, and it could be considerably costly, that we want to keep it more flexible so that we can improve it in other ways than by paving it. But, you know, I'm hoping that through this plan that we can look at that area.
Well, and again, ma'am, that's, I think, one of the things I would, I would suggest is that, you know, if the council has an appetite, if you've got projects that you've got identified, why don't we just do like we did with the stairway between Alvarado and Tularay? I mean, if there's a project you want developed, tell the city engineer to develop it, give us a cost estimate, I can bring it forward to you. I don't think we need a consultant to do that for us. We know the trail, we know where it is. We've heard this at repeated times. If that's the desire of the council, I'll get a cost estimate, I'm putting it together, and I will put it together in an effective and least costly fashion that will still be in compliance with our regional board requirements. Because the concern, I think, the city manager was relaying to you is that part of the challenge we have with the municipal regional permit is under the new development phase, is that anybody creating an impermeable surface is now a new development. So a city paving a pathway now would have to meet stormwater treatment requirements for that.
Right.
A city taking roadway that used to be like a dirt shoulder and paving it, that's now new development, and you would have to do stormwater treatment on. So it just starts to make things very, very incredibly costly. But I think I've got workarounds on all those things, so I'm just happy to take direction from you all.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Well, there's a lot of other materials besides pavement that can be good trail surfaces.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments?
No, I'd make a motion to approve an RFP regarding creation of bicycle trails and pedestrian master plan.
And a second?
Modifications as discussed. Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Brings us staff report, city manager's report on upcoming activities.
None.
Thank you. Mayor Council Matters brings us to countywide assignment subcommittee reports. Who'd like to go first?
Mine would be real short. Had, while we already did the subcommittee on garbage, that was acknowledged, a couple things back, but had a meeting with the OES Office of Emergency Service or the Emergency Service Council. I didn't attend it, but one of the things that, that was today at 5:30, but one of the things that was on the agenda was the cost increase for the communication tower that they're going to be putting up at Skylon. And this has been an ongoing project for many years, and the cost has increased about 20, 25 percent from 2012, mainly because the differential between $2,012 and $2,015. But it's about 97 percent approved between the county and the cemetery operators. And the purpose of this, this tower is to increase the emergency communications with the coast side, to the peninsula side. You've got to have it in a location that kind of hits that peak, otherwise it won't make it over the mountains, so.
Right.
And that's real important. So it's kind of been ongoing for a while, but just kind of update you that, and those costs aren't coming out of each city. There's a fund there that cities had, you know, had money part of for this communication. And so what happened was they just are taking the money out of that fund. It was about $1.2 million, so, and it's increasing to about $825,000. That's it.
Thank you. Laurie?
So I met with the library JPA board. We reelected the officers, Carol Groom as the chair, and Ann Casten from Woodside as the vice chair. We approved our budget for the fiscal year 2015-16, and we approved of the use of some donor funds as we've done in the past. And there's going to be some donor fund subcommittee discussion upcoming at future meetings through their subcommittee that's dealing with that
Thank you.
ongoing issue.
Yeah, there'll always be donor funds.
I'm sorry, I had one more. Terry and I met with Stuart on the North County Fire JPA, and so there was a rotation that was done, we set the annual budget, and then there was a rotation that was done, and, you know, I shot out of the gate and nominated Terry as the chair.
And Clark as the vice chair, so...
Yeah, it was done by city, you know, they rotate every two years for
So it's our turn, huh?
It was Brisbane's turn.
Okay, got it.
And I have to say, it is the, it is the fastest meeting I've attended, except for the, I guess the Council of Cities was, was about that fast, too. So, did you have any others?
No, the other was about the skate park, but Jennifer Busque pretty much covered that, so.
I'm sorry, Laurie, I thought you were finished.
No, that's it.
Right?
Yeah, I have just one thing to report. Anya and Tony Attard and Dana Dilworth and I attended the memorial service, Eucharist actually, at Grace Cathedral today at noon. And I gave the program to Sherry, then she can make, you know, copies for all of you because they had a very nice summary of his contributions to the Grace Cathedral community, which were quite considerable, which I didn't realize. It was a beautiful service. There was about, what, 60 people there? And it was, you know, it's quite interesting when you're in that kind of environment and you have this, you know, formal church service, it's just a different feeling. And so it was really a lovely event, and we were happy that we were there to participate. And we talked to the clergy, and they were very pleased that we were there. So it was all around a good event, and so, you know, Paul is being remembered.
That's nice.
I wasn't aware it was happening. How'd you find out?
From Grace Cathedral.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They called you, or?
No, Anya actually was in touch with them. Actually, she posted it on Brisbane, and she said, are you doing anything for Paul? Because he was very active in their music program. I mean, he played the piano for them, he played the carillon. I mean, he really, for years, he was, you know, a big part of their music program. And so she asked, so are you doing anything? And then they said, I'll get back to you. And so they did. And so then Anya actually posted it on Brisbane.
I don't subscribe.
I'm sorry that, you know, didn't, others didn't know about it because it was really a wonderful service.
Yeah, I don't subscribe to Brisbane.
Yeah, it was really, really nice.
Would, I know that we did receive a memo from Tony Attard about Dr. Gorki, and he, would you like to read that, or?
No, I think it, I think it's okay. I mean, he's just adding to the recollections that we all have and how important he was to the community at that time.
Well, I think I'll read the last sentence.
Okay.
And it says, "Paul was truly one of the pioneers that paved the way for saving San Bruno Mountain and our small town. We owe him a debt of gratitude to remember what he did."
Yeah, amen.
Thank you, Paul. Signed by Tony Attard. Do you have any subcommittee reports you'd like to?
This morning, I was at the commute.org meeting with Maria. We adopted our work plan, our budget, and our strategic plan for the next five years. So we're going to be getting a new shuttle provider July 1st, so we're going to have to deal with all the stuff that's been going on with the current company and not having service, or having spotty service, I should say. So hopefully that'll all come to an end July 1st. We'll get the new company, you know, starting July 1st, the vans, they'll have this GPS tracking, so people who wanted to, who use the shuttles, they can get an app for their phone, and they can track where the shuttle is going in real time. So it's, yeah, technology is one of the major tools that commute.org is using to reduce traffic congestion. Then later this, later in the day, I had a heart meeting, and we're discussing moving from just a, you know, trying to raise money for affordable housing, but actually really looking at the potential of the JPA. So we have this JPA that I think we under, underuse, it's underperforming. And so when you do something for a long period of time, you just kind of get stuck in that way, and you don't want to change. We've raised not very much money over the last 20 years. Granted, some of their programs are very good with the first-time homebuyer program, and they've provided some seed money for some affordable housing projects. But it's looking at, how do you help cities to navigate, you know, having the political will and looking at land and using it for workforce housing? You know, using for affordable housing for your, you know, for someone like You know, using for affordable housing for your, you know, for someone like Dr. Gorki, who gave so much to his community and yet could not live in our community when he was a senior. And he had to leave, right? And, you know, that's, that's that's what heart is trying to, I think, kind of come to grips with, and that it can be that advocate to help cities. And, you know, to address that. So, but we'll see. We have, you know, some members that don't want to change, so, but if we don't change, then they're just going to keep dealing with the same stuff that we'd be dealing with. And people not being able to live where they work is not healthy for any community. So, all right, so that's it.
So I attended the North County Fire and then also the CCAG where they discussed toll and hot lanes, which are the they end at the San, at the 380 line where so many of CCAG's projects tend to end. But they're going to be looking at how they can add a hot lane or a toll lane and whether they can on 101 and what the implications for that would be. We also had a stormwater report and went into some of the NPT's issues and hope that the county, the countywide report gets accepted by the state. There was some information about PCBs coming out of buildings, from the caulking of buildings, from a certain era buildings that we may have. And that might be one way if you develop a plan to dispose of the demolition waste that you might meet some of your NPT's requirements for PCB abatement. But that's something they're not sure is going to be feasible at this point. And I think I attended one other meeting, and I'm not even thinking which one that was. So that's it for me.
Motion to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM.
Say again?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So I think we handled the written communication from Tony Attard. That brings us to item C, designation of voting delegates and alternatives, alternates for League of California Cities. I'm not sure we need to do this yet. This is a July action, July 31st.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. That's the usual.
If, if we're going.
Yeah, if the people are going, yeah.
Right, and at this
It's insane of they, sure.
This point, depending on circumstances, I am out of the country during that weekend. What? Depending on circumstances. So I'm not committing to going to.
Who is authorizing that?
I'm not committing to this yet, so that's why I would like to put it off at this point.
Yeah, well, sure. I mean, that's okay to put it off.
Because there's.
But usually it's the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, and then if that's not possible, then we'll, you know,
Right.
revisit it.
Pick an alternate.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, unless you want to do it now and we, because we can designate two alternates, but I don't know who's.
I mean, I would do it if you couldn't be there or did not want to do it. So, you know, I'll take on that responsibility now in the city.
And I, you know, I've attended these in the past, and I've always gotten some good information out of them. So I, I don't know my schedule yet for those dates, but it appears to be clear. I check my calendar, but I don't want to commit to it, but I might be hoping to attend.
I, I'd like to put it off till at least start July meeting and see where we're at on that.
That's fine.
It's okay.
And that brings us to oral communications, too, and there are no members of the public here. So I am going to assume that none want to speak. And move to adjourn to a successor agency meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.